Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Oh, there's Bob. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
And Mayor Terry.
Here.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please read the Metro TV announcement?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Wednesday, October 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Thursday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. So, item three is our Pledge of Allegiance, and after our Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation that tonight, at the last minute, thank you, we have Walter Little of St. John Vianney to do our invocation. So with that, our pledge tonight will be led by, I think I just saw Stacy Anderson's head in the back there, so you can do it from there, but we'll have you lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, with every being and justice
Let us pray. Heavenly Creator, known by many names in many traditions, we come before you this evening in humble awareness of the tremendous destructive power that has come across our state and the numbers of lives that have been displaced, but we also call to mind the grace of so many of our brothers and sisters who have stepped up to help those in need. As we come together to renew our pledge to take care of our city, we remember and we hope that you will be with us as we all struggle as a state to take care of those who are most in need, and we ask your blessing upon all of us this evening and what we are about to accomplish in your name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to presentations. Our first presentation is Community Enhancement Fund Grant Check Presentation, which is always the best part of our meetings. And our guru of checks is here, Mrs. Delaney.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and guests. I am Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to four organizations that were approved for funding through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, youth, the arts, quality of life, and civic engagement. Mayor and councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their checks. And the Cordova Community Food Locker is very excited. They're already ready for you. The first check being presented this evening is for the Cordova Community Food Locker to upgrade their facility in order to improve safety, energy efficiency, and to enhance the food locker's ability to store food. This will improve their ability to continue its operation of distributing emergency food supplies to the hungry, including families with children in Rancho Cordova. Deacon Walter Little, Gary Greason, and Linda Condon are accepting the check for $17,000.
It's a little brighter in that flash. It's a little more pink.
The second check is for the Cordova Community Council Foundation to continue its role of sponsoring the Rancho Cordova River City Concert Band and their continued activities, including holding five public performances in the community.
Or you don't get the check.
The band will purchase new percussion equipment, new sheet music, and a trailer. This continues to elevate the quality of arts in the city and provides residents with increased access to high-quality musical performances in their community. Brian Buell is accepting the check for $19,000.
Good for you. I almost wore that. Thank you, purple. Thank you, purple tie.
The third check this evening is for pro-youth and families to provide three programs in the city, the Youth at City Council program, the Summer at City Hall Academy, and the Community Investment Project. These programs build civically-involved young people who become involved stakeholders in the city's success. Stacy Anderson and student Jordan Shimke are accepting the check for $70,000.
Can we get a lot of response?
The fourth check this evening is for Rebuilding Together Sacramento to support a rebuild event in April 2018. During that event, repairs and maintenance work for 12 to 15 qualifying single-family residences will take place. Hundreds of volunteers will come together to make this day a success. The work is aimed at improving the health, safety, and curbside appeal of the homes, and this may include things such as basic weatherization, accessibility, water conservation, paint, fencing, yard maintenance, et cetera. Carrie Grip is accepting the check for $150,000. This concludes tonight's presentations.
Okay, so item 5.2 is going to be postponed till our following meeting. So that brings us to item 5.3, and we have a birthday. And he's game enough to put the hat on. I don't know who put that hat on my, at the dais here, but I figured that was for that. So with that, Bob, you have the best singing voice, so if you want to lead us in. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Aaron. Happy birthday to you. And I think, I think he wants us to remind everyone here that it is not his birthday today. He still has a few more days left in his 30s. And we do have some cupcakes, I believe, in the break room over there. So with that, we will move on. No, no, you have to wear the hat the whole time. No. The funny thing is, is I don't think anyone's ever, yeah, none of us have ever gotten hats. I don't know where that came from, so. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon, or will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the city is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
We do have three speaker cards. Sharon Judy is first, followed by Rick Manus and then Mr. Lopez. Sharon?
My name's Sharon Judy. I live on Rockingham, sorry. And our issue is between Nut Plains and Rootier. We have had seven incidents this year, last one Friday, hit and run. We're getting really frustrated, having to wait and wait for the process. We're just getting to the point where, you know, our kids can't even go out and play in the front yard anymore because it's not safe. So if you could maybe just do something, because enough is enough. Thank you.
You said Rockingham between Rootier and Nut Plains?
Nut Plains, yep.
Okay. Have you worked with our Public Works Department yet on the petition?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I know there's a process, but it's gotten really bad. And the school is another issue, Abraham Lincoln.
And what's the issue there?
Stupid parents. Basically, really.
I used to be the school board member for that neighborhood.
And speed, blowing stop signs.
I'm not going to disagree with you.
Yeah. Well, when you get flipped off by them, when you yell at them to stop.
As far as the school and probably parking and those issues, our chief of police is in the back there. He's the only guy with the badge, if you can't tell.
They've been trying to help.
Okay, so let's at least have you touch base with him. I don't know if I see anybody from Public Works, but they should at least be able to update you on the process, and I know that...
Yeah, we have to wait till spring.
Well, last year, though, we, Sarah, maybe we can check and see if this was one of the 10 that we funded with, or that we were considering funding with Measure H, because weren't we going to clear out the waiting list of those? So I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where you are in the process, but I know there was an interest to get rid of the ones that had been approved.
Well, they're supposed to be sending ballots out, but we know what we want.
Okay.
Because I said, speed bumps and speed bumps is what we want.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Then they have the process, they say.
Okay. Yeah, so we can, we can definitely keep an eye on that, and we, I know we've been very interested in trying to clear the backlog of those that we have.
Yeah, because it's, this year's been so bad.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Rick Manus.
Thank you. I'm Rick Manus, a 30-plus-year resident of Rancho. Anecdotal reports and the experience of many of us suggest that the homeless problem is getting more and more widespread and dangerous for both homeless and homed residents in Rancho and elsewhere in the region. In that connection, the September 29 Sacramento Bee reported on a controversial program mounted by residents of Sacramento's Land Park, in which residents frequently post photos and related information of homeless in their area, engaging in various kinds of legal and illegal activity that is epidemic among the homeless, including illegal camping, dumping trash piles, panhandling, drugs, needles, and so on. Well, the program's intent is well-intended to get the city council's attention focused on the problem and get the homeless moved to where they need to be. It is controversial because it seems to be a dead end, some say resulting in no additional assistance to those who need it, where are they to go, but arguably shaming them needlessly. But a program like that could be supportive and helpful, rather than detrimental, if its posts were available to groups that must and can provide assistance. We are lucky to have access to the Sacramento Steps Forward Program and to the program's local navigator, David, who guides homeless towards services and housing, but he's way outnumbered. We need more Davids against this Goliath of a problem. And the Davids and other authorities need to have more facilities available that provide services and housing. We can't simply be moving the homeless around. The council here needs to seriously look more closely at this issue, and I'm another resident asking that it step up its historic efforts. We cannot pat ourselves on the back saying we have done enough when there are not enough places to get services and housing. We need to get the county, the parkspeople, and other authorities more engaged and move this issue higher up everyone's priority list. It's not just a Rancho problem, but it is at least a Rancho problem. But in the meantime, who on the council or the staff do I need to talk to to determine what media would be the best method for residents regularly getting real-time information into the hands of police, navigators, advocates, and other residents who are charged with getting services to the housing, and services and housing to the homeless or getting them to the services and housing, so we won't be mired in this morass this resident is asking. Thank you.
Our third speaker is...
Actually, let's have the city manager give a brief response to the last speaker.
Just very quickly for Mr. Manus, the staff person who's been assigned to this task is Stefan Heisler. He's in the audience today, and last, at the last council meeting, we did have a fairly robust presentation related to different programs that are being implemented not at the county, not only at the county level, but also at the city, city level. So Stefan can provide you with the information. You can also refer back to the notes or the video from the last meeting that we had that were, and you could find more information related to it.
Thank you.
Our third speaker is Jorge Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jorge Lopez, and I am the Chief Executive Officer for A Method Public Schools, APS, and we have a charter petition pending to serve the Rancho Cordova area, the Lincoln Village area specifically, pending with Sacramento City Unified. I'm just here to express my gratitude for all of the support and all of the conversations and that Rancho Cordova, many members here, and just the public in general in the city has, has been overwhelming. And I just want to say thank you and to say that I am, you know, I am looking so forward to serving this community together with you all. Ben Franklin said that an investment in knowledge pays the highest interest. Your investment and your trust in us will, we are, say it tonight, we're just going to pay a high interest because we are going to run a high-performing school system for this city. So I look forward to working with you all, and I am super excited to be in the Rancho Cordova area. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. That's it, okay. So with that, we'll move on to council reports, and our first one is Councilman Gatewood.
So I went on my first study mission to Austin, Texas, and I wanted to learn because I heard that they had a drop percentage in homelessness and what they were doing. I wanted to know the techniques they were using because they said that they're a tech epicenter, and I wanted to see what kind of problems we're going to have in the future. So, interesting things that I've learned that we could bring in back to Rancho. What they found is that if they can, if they can find a way to put a homeless in a house and, and get them off the streets, they're able to surround services around them, and so what they do is their city gets together to create an insurance fund and puts in money so that if a landhomer is willing to house that person and they wreck it, then the insurance takes care of it. They don't tap on it a lot, but it's a way that they found to be able to get their homeless vets. They have a zero, not 0%, but zero, what's it called again?
Functional.
A functional zero.
Zero, yeah.
Which means that they have enough housing to home, to house every one of their homeless vets. And we should be so kind to be able to take care of all the vets that took care of us to be able to get them a house, and I'd love to be, you know, that type of zero in their area. Next thing is a tech incubator for our, our region. We don't have a good one in the region. We have a couple, but not something that's focused surely on tech. And after digging into the notes and really meeting with all their high-end techs, what I've learned is that you need three or four large companies that basically hold a tech innovator for a long, long time and allow it to grow in a city. So luckily, we have all the works of Cheap Land, Good Warehouse Space, and we have some pretty decent-sized big companies because they were on the study mission, they'd be willing to help out, including banks. So that was interesting. As for the homeless, the interesting thing about Austin, Texas, which I learned, is that it was a city, and this is a quote from the mayor, which I'm probably not supposed to read, and I'll make sure that I look to see if there's a glare after I say it. Their mayor, their mayor. Austin, Texas is the home, was the home of good beer and cheap weed, and that's what made Austin, Texas famous. Austin, Texas was known for its music and kind of its, its kind of rebel-ness and being what they called the blueberry, because they said it about 50,000 times. They're the blueberry in the tomato soup. After looking at what they've become, they're, it's a big red state, and the blue is the, I don't have to explain it. No, so what's happened to the city is they brought in four high-end tech firms, including Intel, and I think it's Toshiba, and a couple others, the big national firms, and the culture is completely flipped to where it is a high-end tech firm, but tech city, but they have no mass transit. So what's happening is the culture that was built, the arts culture down Sixth Street, the interesting individuals that could live there, the uniqueness of the city, it's been pushed to the edges of Austin or even out of Austin completely. And because there's no mass transit, there's no way for their workers to come into their city. So as we build Rancho Cordova into the next megaplex and the next big city, we always got to remember that this kind of infrastructure and stuff has to be thought out in advance, and we have to be able to accept it because it's so easy to lose the culture that you guys spent, and we've all spent, kind of building Rancho into this nice supple area ready for all types of business and stuff in here. It's so easy to let companies and decide not, if you're not working as a partnership, they said to me, and I was talking to the mayor and another person, they said, "We wanted to put our head in the ground, so when Austin started to grow, we just said we're not going to talk to anybody, we're just going to put our head in the ground, and we're not going to grow." Well, the business community decided to keep tilting up homes, and basically, they took out every affordable housing and pushed it completely out. So it's weird to see a city that doesn't have a light rail. I haven't seen a big city, they have a million people and no way for people to get across town, except if you have a car. Very interesting. I'm glad I went, and I hope to bring the good parts of it to Rancho Cordova.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's been a busy week, a lot of interesting stuff going on. I think the, my favorite event of the week was the Rancho Cordova Sports Hall of Fame event last Saturday night, a, another sold-out event. This, of course, is a spawned project of the Rancho of Athletic Association. It's the third year we've done the event. It's hard to believe it's been that many already, but hundreds of people attended. We inducted more than a couple dozen into the Hall of Fame, including an entire baseball team that sort of holds, holds a state record for number of wins, the number of titles achieved as a team. It's, it's pretty amazing to see these NFL players and Major League Baseball players and other really stellar athletes come back and mingle with their coaches and their parents and their classmates and talk about Rancho Cordova then and Rancho Cordova now. It's, I think, a great win all the way around, and at RCA, we're trying to figure out how to tap into this group of people that we've now assembled as award winners and members of our Sports Hall of Fame. We think there's unique assets there, we're occasionally offered some of them, and we want to be sure we take advantage of that as a group. Another challenge, I might be presenting this to you, my colleagues, at some point, is we need to find a way to recognize them, probably in this building. A wall, a list, a series of plaques, something like that somewhere in here to recognize who's actually a member of this Hall of Fame that the city, in essence, has chartered through RCA. So I want you to think about that. I don't want to, you know, take up prime real estate, but it has some importance for the community, so give that some thought.
Walls are empty.
We do have some empty walls in here.
Bricks, too.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of possibility. On that same topic of RCA, we had a meeting last Monday talking about Youth Basketball League. We funded a youth basketball startup effort here through a Measure H Community Enhancement Fund project, and like any league startup, it is a big challenge. It is a hard thing to start from nothing and build up a youth league. And this is sort of, Garrett, like the story of youth football in Rancho Cordova. In that case, it was kind of a rescue mission that was done by the other leaders of RCA. In this case, it's more like a consulting group has come together to help this new league get off the ground, and it's just a beautiful thing to see, all these other sports leagues who really have no interest in this new thing succeeding, other than to lift Rancho Cordova as a whole. And they're all giving and, and working together, and I think we're going to have a great youth basketball league coming up in the spring as a result. I attended a very interesting session after our regular SECOG transportation meeting last week. We had Stephen Levy as a guest. He, Linda, you might remember him. He is like the state guru on projecting population and population growth and decline in the state.
Demographic stuff.
Demographics and, and population. He said it all comes down to jobs, which, you know, is, in other words, is a region growing or shrinking in population. It's all about how many jobs are there. Nothing else really tracks. So he said, "I'm really just focused on what are the jobs doing in different regions." And the surprising news he had for us in Sacramento was that we're probably not going to grow as fast as we have been growing in the future. The entire state is seeing growth decline as jobs are sort of exiting the state, and we're probably going to get hit a little harder, he would predict, than other regions of the state. So that's something to think in terms of, you know, how many houses are we adding? How much space are we, are we zoning? That our growth rate might be declining. So there would be more work done by SECOG, the final, this is just sort of his off-the-top at a lunch, saying this is what I see going on in the state and what I see going on here. They have a lot more work to do in this next plan to get to actual numbers, but I think I'm going to try to keep a very close eye on that particular number because it has a big impact on, on us, obviously, in a growth area. And finally, we did a SECOG board retreat last Friday, I think the first time in a decade, and maybe they shouldn't be done all that much more often, but with a new executive director. Made a lot of sense. Really valuable discussions in the room at a very high level, and I'd say the consensus for the day was, ironically, focus on the jobs, focus on the economics of transportation investments. So that's where we are. That's my report.
Well, I wanted to echo what David said about the Athletic Hall of Fame. There's some people there who've been still here for a while. Like, one of them was Bob Arianas. He began the soccer, you might say, in this whole Sacramento area, and he is one of the ones that we had, added to the Hall of Fame. There are so many good athletes here and people who put in an awful lot of time and still are putting in a lot of time. So that was really a great, great thing to do, to be here, and I was really glad that I was able to be here. Something that happened that I was very pleased to hear is Senate Bill 649 was vetoed by the governor and is sent back to the Senate. That was a bill that was going to allow the communication companies, some of them to put in small cell towers or anything else they want, any place they want, and the city wouldn't be able to say no. Well, it's going to go back to the Senate now, and we'll see what happens, but it's been vetoed. So that's something that I was really pleased about, that, and we were one of the 200 and some odd cities who were officially listed as opposing that bill in the League of Californian Cities, so that was something that was very good. The scale of vector control, the West Nile virus activity is going down along, just kind of a natural thing along with the weather. Something else that's kind of interesting on that is that the, as the rice is being harvested, and there's so many thousands of acres that are, we're growing rice on that, then some of that area is being, water is being used by the duck clubs for, and the wetlands also, for this coming season. So we'll see what happens with that, but I think it's something that's going to be very good also as to, I think, oh, one more thing, the wild rice is something that's being harvested now, and then that area will be used also. And the, one program called the Echo Project in the sanitation district, that's the project that we have to completely redo our sanitation plant there in Elk Grove, which handles most of the county and more, and that's going really, really well. It's, we have contracts which are going on constantly. I think we have the last one that's done for this year, has been signed. The concrete that's been poured is just tons and tons. I can't even remember how many have been done, but we saw pictures of it with the last meeting that I went to. There is usually, there's two meetings a month with that. This month, we're only having one. So that's something that's going to be a very interesting thing to see as we, as we go down the road. This is a huge plant. If you haven't had a chance to go down in Elk Grove and look at it, it's worth your while to go look and see that. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
So the, what's now called UCP, it used to be United Civil Paulsley, Paulsy has a variety of adult daycare locations around the county. And they've just opened up a brand new one in Rancho Cordova and several of us went to the ribbon cutting over there. What's unique about this one is that the predominant theory on what to do with family members who had mental or developmental disabilities in the early part of the 20th century was to put them in institutions. And everybody can think of the really extremely large brick building that exists, probably at the intersection of Highway 12 in Napa and maybe the road to Sonoma. We assume they're both still there at this point, but, and so recently, legislation has released all those people from what amounted to a prison for people with disabilities. And so they've all come home to their families, but they need some outlet for them, some way for them to not only get help, but socialization and activities and really playtime and, and that kind of thing. And so this is the first one of these centers that the, that UCP is doing and it's right here in Rancho Cordova. And it was, it's very simple. It's in an office building that's been here for like 20 years, but it's obviously going to be a very warm, welcoming place for them and the staff was superb and, and I know we all enjoyed seeing that. Everybody's right, the Hall of Fame is just, is just tremendous. And they, they award people who have, who have been outstanding accomplishments in every sport. We had, there was a gentleman there who was from wrestling. There have been runners in the past. So many people, and the fun thing about it, there's so many people here in Rancho Cordova that we've known for a long time, but we don't necessarily associate them with the sports world, like Bob Arianas. And I had no idea, you know, I think back to all those years ago when our kids played soccer and it would never have occurred to me that he was one of the founders of the Rancho Cordova Soccer League and I was just absolutely amazed. So tons of history and David's right, we can, I'm sure we can find a wall where we can do something appropriate. The study mission, yes, there's no question about it, that we always bring back valuable information and I will do as I always do and write up what I thought was worthwhile to share with my colleagues who didn't go and with anybody else who's interested. I would add to Garrett's takeaway, a couple from economic development. The gentleman who is the Economic Development Director for the City of Austin made a presentation where he talked about the fact that the University of Texas, which is a huge asset to the Austin region, and it reminds us all that we need our universities to participate more than they currently do because there's so much they've got that they could help us accomplish. So the University of Texas researched the fact that for every homeless or low-income student that they could educate, they know that person will generate $50,000 in income and taxes over the lifetime. And so they are, they are actively involved in educating their kids. And it's not that they go in and tell the school districts how to do it, but they provide mentorship, they help them fill out forms to, to get scholarships and grants, both state and federal scholarships and grants. And they give them, they, they take them through classes on how to go to college and they even tell them, based on what they're personally interested in, what kinds of classes they need to take in college so that they will qualify for the jobs that they have in the Austin region so that they can stay home and be, become productive members of society. It's a tremendous linkage that we've never heard anyplace else and it's something well worth considering here. Loved the insurance bailout for the, for the people, for the landlords who are willing to house people like that. But truly, this was, you could, you could talk about a, a really important factoid or something that we are, can, something we can make use of here in every, almost every session that we attended, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Courtesy of our friends at the Chamber, I need to let you know that in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Chick-fil-A, everybody loves Chick-fil-A, I'm not going to read you what it says because it's as funny as their cow ads. Is sponsoring a vehicle which is going to do breast health and screening on Tuesday, October the 21st, 24th, from 8:00 to 8:00 at their Sunrise Boulevard location. And the screening is free for almost everyone who has some sort of medical program except for Kaiser because they, Kaiser has an active program. But you'll start seeing these flyers around because this is like next week. And ladies, there are people here in the audience who know the value of screening, just as we all do, so it's time to take advantage of this free opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. So a lot of this is somewhat repeats, but yeah, had a great time at the UCP ribbon cutting and learning more about what that program is going to look like. Some of us, I think the times got a little confused with the National or International Manufacturing Day, but we had a small event with Congressman Ami Bera, a handful of the council, and Supervisor Natoli at a claim stake. What better thing to do at 2:00 on a Friday than go to a brewery and, and talk about National Manufacturing Day? So we got a brief tour from the owners there and to talk a little bit more about what they've been doing with their wing of manufacturing that's in our city and help, and working with Valley Vision and helping to promote the, the different manufacturing that we are doing here in Rancho Cordova. So that was a lot of fun. I also just wanted to say, and this is probably also something for another meeting at another point around Measure H, but did want to commend the governor into signing into law the new Promise Program, which essentially means that every student in California can attend Community College tuition-free for the first year. Wondering where he got that idea, except maybe from cities like ours that decided to fund it, but it's funny that I think this was the exact scenario that we had talked about. If the county had done it, what would be the next step that we would want to do? And hopefully we can come up with raising the bar again above what the state did. But that, that's just great news, not only for our, our citizens in our community, but for our whole state. Also got to attend or participate in the International Walk to School Day and did a walking school bus at Sunrise Elementary with my son, even though he's on, he's on break right now, we still walked to school with everyone else and then walked home and went to grandma's and dropped him off, but had a great time. They had hundreds and hundreds of kids chose to walk for it. And I know there were, there were similar events throughout the city, but we attended that one at my son's school. Also joined Garrett and Lynda at the Austin Mission Trip. This was the first one I was able to, to attend, our study mission. And it was really fascinating. I think Garrett, I think hit the nail on the head when, you know, the identity of Austin and what made Austin a very attractive community for the last 25 years was its art and its live music scene. And the more that you talk to them, the more that because of the improvements that they've made, they're losing that identity. And it's really interesting to juxtapose that to San Francisco and other places where the art and the music and the things that were coming out of San Francisco or downtown LA or certain other places, that as these communities have improved, they've lost a lot of that identity, right? And, you know, the guys that work at Facebook and Google, while they can afford a lot of expensive drinks, they don't know how to play piano or play a guitar or sing usually. So there's, there's a trade-off to a lot of this and we're seeing really, if you look at, if you look at Austin, a microcosm of what we're seeing throughout California, but there's only a couple places in Texas that you're really seeing it the same way because most of the jobs that Texas are creating are low-income jobs, even more so than I think we're seeing in California. So it was, it was a very interesting trip. The way that they fund their hospitals, I think, is fascinating. Everything is driven by their, their property taxes, which is not obviously a revenue that we can control at the local level or really at any level in this state because of Prop 13. And so to me, the, the one thing that I took away that I really want to figure out is what is their real tax rate comparatively to ours? Because from the things that I was hearing, I'm guessing their property taxes line up probably just about the same if you add our sales income tax and property tax together, that we are not a higher taxed community. But, but what we are seeing is double-digit growth in housing costs year over year are pretty much going to be the, the straw that breaks the camel's back when it comes to low-income and middle-income families in California. And you're seeing it there on a much more finite scale and because of their lack of investment in infrastructure, you, the, the lowest-income people are spending the most time in their cars because it's the only way to get around. And they, they just haven't invested in public infrastructure at all.
So let's add one, since community council's still here, let's add one of the, one little piece of information to, to this conversation about how people like the artists get pulled, pushed out of town due to what we all consider civic improvement, but the negative side of that, it's like the, going to the dark side is, is the word gentrification. In a magazine that I've brought to read on the plane on the way back, there's a page of what do certain people in Austin make? And the second lowest-paid employees in Austin work in entertainment and the arts and they make $25,000 a year. The only people who make less than they do are the people who drive taxis in Austin and they make $24,000 some odd dollars. So given that Austin is, is committed to high-rises and condos and a lot of the downtown living that needs to be high-rise living, and it's just not planning for the people who have always made downtown Austin a great place to be. And so as we, as we try to grow our arts and culture scene here in Rancho Cordova, it is important that we remember that, those kinds of statistics.
And, and having space for, because it's not, it's not just that they're moving further away from the city, they're just moved other places too. They've lost a lot of that.
It has to do with how do you value what makes you special?
Yeah. So it was, it was, it was very interesting. The way that they fund, I think I said, the way that they fund their hospital system is they create hospital districts and they, they tax five cents on every thousand dollars of value of every property in a 40-county region, which is nearly impossible in California to try to put something together like that. But it's an interesting way of doing it. We also got to visit, and I cannot remember the name of the development that we saw on the final day, but it was a faith-based, permanent housing shelter is the way I'm going to describe it. It is not, it's not a housing center, it's a shelter. They had trailers and tiny houses and canvas houses and some other things and is one hurricane away from disappearing, but it's, it's one way of scaling up emergency housing that I think might be something that, that as a region we should be trying to explore. And we don't have hurricanes here, you know, and we don't have earthquakes, so we probably could pull something like that off, but putting people in trailers forever is not, is not housing, in my opinion.
Community-first village.
There you go. That was a very, that was a very interesting visit and I think it has application in California, but not for the use that they were using it for.
Stripping people out of a city and not finding a way to reintroduce them is not building the city. You just took the culture back out again.
Yeah. And then the other thing I wanted, that I, I thought was a very interesting comparison was UT, so University of Texas, Austin, about 55,000 students. If you add up Sac State and UC Davis, there's more students between the two of them. So the size of our two main institutions are larger than this institution and we are in relatively the same-sized market. This, they're, I mean, the city of Sacramento's only 400,000, but even this market's 2.4 million, 2.5, they're about 2.1 million. And they have this singular institution in their city that, in my opinion, is much more ingrained into the economy and the local community than UC Davis or Sac State could ever hope to be.
Absolutely.
So it was, it was really fast. I mean, and they just got a medical school. So they opened the first new medical school in 50 years. So this university that is doing a lot more in the community than I see either of our institutions doing. And I'm saying this wearing my UC Davis pin tonight, so I don't know if I'm going to catch on fire or something, but, but the, the lost opportunity because of the lack of participation, and, and it's not that the president of Sac State or the chancellors of UC Davis haven't tried, but the, they pale in comparison to the type of economic output and support that UT is providing in Austin. And to me, that seems like, like the biggest takeaway for me is that there's the opportunities that we should be able to have with the, a newer president at Sac State and a brand-new chancellor at UC Davis that, that's actually coming from Georgia Tech where I think they got it more than, than, in working with Atlanta, that maybe we have that opportunity to really collaborate. I mean, we have all of the, the same tools. The only thing we don't have is 80, an 80,000-person football stadium and, and the sports programs to go with it.
Probably 125.
What's that?
125,000.
But ours has a better record. Go Stingers.
I think they're playing different teams. But, but it is really interesting that, that if you take the, the research facilities, the medical school, any of those things, the infrastructure that we have here far exceeds what UT has, but they're using it in such a better way. So I'm sorry.
So no, there's a possibility that their commitment to participation may have to do with the other hallmark that, that jumped off the page at all of us and the fact that most of the great ideas that are making Austin successful come from the private sector. They don't come from a government agency or a government committee. They don't sit around and wait for the jurisdictions or the special districts to come up with the solutions to problems. They get out there and they either come up with good ideas or, or they come up with solutions, or they come up with great programs and innovations. We, we saw that on the study mission to Indianapolis. David was on that one, he'll remember that. Small city government in Indianapolis and, and all the great ideas came from the private sector. That's the kind of thing, that's the kind of mindset we need to grow in the private sector at all the chambers of commerce. That's where, that's where this idea can start.
Yeah, that's, that is a good point, that the Samsung example of only hiring within Texas and a lot of other things that they were doing, that, that it was all driven by private sector, right? So anyways, it was a great trip. I did not take nearly as many notes as you did, Lynda, so I'm looking forward to reading your notes to remind me of all of the things I forgot. And so with that, we'll move over to the C Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention something else about the, the Sports Hall of Fame. I was able to attend and I'd just like to take a minute and congratulate the Cordova Community Council and Councilmember Senator, the work that you've put into this. It's an incredible event. If you have not been able to attend, I highly encourage you to, to participate in this gathering that happens every year. It's an amazing way to honor those who were in sports in the community and made it to great places and, and it's a great way to bring them back home. Many of them have moved on, have moved on to either different states or different places, but they, this is a great time of the year when they all could come back to the community and be honored for their contributions and what they have done for this community. So thank you for all you have done. It was an incredible event. Enough has been said about the study mission. I just wanted to point out that I was able to accompany the council on, on this trip. And my greatest takeaway from that trip was really the focus and discussion on economic development. Obviously not, every city is the same, but having lived in Austin some years ago and going back to Austin and seeing where they were and where they are today and what worked and what hasn't, it's definitely a great experience and something, something to see. And we also managed to have a Secog organize a gathering for, to have a focused discussion on transit. And we were able to get together with a group of elected officials and, and executive staff with Secog and regional transit to talk about transit, the future of transit and, and truly the changes that we are seeing in the technology, with transportation technology and how they might affect the future of transit. So really good, robust discussion and we hope that as part of the study that regional transit is initiating, we can incorporate it, incorporate some of those ideas and thoughts into that process. Thank you. Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of items deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to push and pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any comment cards or anything on the consent agenda?
We already took care of that.
Okay, that's right. Anything to poll?
Seeing none, I will move approval of items 9.1 through 9.6.
Second. Have a motion by Budge, a second by Sander. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gateway.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Okay, we have no consent public hearing items, so we'll move on to regular public hearing items. And our first item is 11.1 Sundance tentative subdivision map, special development permit. June.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Wanted to direct you to the site location. I think I had this problem once before. It's, the site location is on the southwest area of Douglas Road and Sunrise Boulevard. And you can see the Sun Ridge Shopping Center to the north, and to the south is the Folsom South Canal. So the applicant is requesting approval of tentative subdivision map, special development permit, and development agreement amendment that includes 114 single-family lots, two landscape corridor lots, those are along Sunrise Boulevard, eight common area lots, and one private road lot. The eight lots and the one private road lot will be owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. So the zoning map, it shows limited commercial, Sun Ridge-specific plan. The site is 12 acres. And so the subdivision is superimposed on the aerial, showing how it relates to the surrounding area. So south of the, or actually to the west of the Folsom South Canal is the Mather Regional Park. And east of the Sun Ridge Plaza Shopping Center is the proposed Anatolia Retail. So a closer look, the site actually gradually slopes to the west and towards the Folsom South Canal and to the Morrison Creek area. There is an existing sound wall between the Sun Ridge Shopping Center and the project site. And between the Walgreens and the project site, there is a open-view wrought iron fence with some landscaping. And there is an existing chain-link fence along the Folsom South Canal. So the letters on the, the aerial will be the next slide showing existing conditions, just pictures from those areas. So A would be off Sunrise, B at the entrance off the shopping center, and C is towards Morrison Creek. This is the view from Sunrise, and to the right you can see Walgreens site. The view from the shopping center entrance, and you can see the sound wall that's existing. This is the view from E Court, and this overlooks the Morrison Creek. And then View D shows the single-loaded street. So the proposed subdivision has two entrances, one at the shopping center entrance, and that's a full movement due to the light on Sunrise Boulevard. And the second is a ride-in, ride-out at Sunrise Boulevard. Each entrance includes decorative colored asphalt, the private roads, and it does include the eight common area lots. And again, those are going to be owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. It does include the Sunrise Boulevard improvements along the property area. There are no gates to the project. And so on September 18th, at the city council meeting, the applicant and staff met with the council for direction on the subdivision map pedestrian connectivity. So there were a couple of things that were highlighted. Sidewalks on one side of the street in the center portion of the subdivision, parking on one side of the street, and guest parking in selected areas, and vertical curb along entrances and selected common open space. So the next slide will show you the map. So the proposed connectivity plan, the green is showing the sidewalks, and the red is the on-street parking. The blue is the vertical curb, and then the yellow is shared delineation. And so the blue didn't show up as well, so this shows where the vertical curb locations are. And this provides a connection to the shopping center and parking barrier along common open space and some of the on-street parking areas. And this is the idea for the shared delineations and signs. So where they don't have a sidewalk, this will be on the side that there is no parking The tentative subdivision map does include a special development permit, and so they're requesting reduced setbacks and lot size. The previously-approved subdivision map also included a special development permit with the same request. The development agreement amendment is to align the current fees, update the exhibits, and that's would be the map and conditions. Extend the development agreement, that's for 10 years. Underneath the analysis, the residential use is consistent with the specific land, land use map, the density of 10 units per acre is consistent with the general plan and zoning, and the subdivision map proposed is consistent with the proposed requested special development permit development standards. One of the best amenities to this is located within walking distance of the shopping and public transportation, and this also gives opportunity for diverse homes, the small lot homes. You were given a RADA sheet, and that's a revision to condition of approval number 28. So the add addition of the languages underlying. And also included to that RADA sheet was a revised staff report attachment three, and that was what was on the slide showing the pedestrian connectivity plan. This had a mitigating negative declaration, it was prepared for the project where the construction of 129 single-family lots were addressed, and the proposed project is to build 114 single-family lots, which is consistent with the project analyzed. No further environmental analysis is required. Staff recommends approval of resolution 125, finding the project to be compliance with CECL guidelines, the subdivision, subdivision map and special development permit, and introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 11, which would be the development agreement amendment. With that, if you had any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
So let's start with, this is a public hearing, so let me open the public hearing.
I have questions for staff.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, June. And I apologize because, as we said, we've all been traveling, so I'm just now looking at the details of this. And I had only the information that, that the applicant provided when I met with them. So I just want to ask, want to ask about one thing that I think you said, no gates.
Correct.
Great, okay. Because at the time I met with them, they wanted to do a gate. But thank you, I appreciate that. All right. Secondly, this business of revising the develop, the special setbacks, I'm looking at page 187 in our staff report, and they've got, there's table number two that is setbacks, and the distance between the buildings is currently nine feet, and they're going to five feet. And the side setback is currently five feet on one side and four feet on the other, and they're proposing zero feet on one side and five feet on the other. Now, if you look at the site development plan, that is our page 212, if you look at the building envelopes that they've shown drawn on there, we have other neighborhoods in Rancho Cordova, longtime neighborhoods, that were built as garden homes, where, and where the, the houses were zero lot-lined, and they were pushed to one side of the lot. And then they have a, they basically had a patio backyard area that all flowed into each other, and that's fine. But if you look at particularly the lots that back up to... These lots back up to the street, or the common area that backs up to the, to the, to the canal. This whole tier of, of lots numbered 95, I think, through 114. If you put those houses, if you, if you do zero lotlines on both sides, on the side setback, on both sides of those houses, then you basically get wall-to-wall, it might as well be townhomes. And number one, that's not legal. If you look at Cat Village, even though they look like, even though the townhouses there look like they're side-by-side, they're not, there's an airspace, and, and then they have a cover over the front of it to give that appearance of a contiguous wall. But I'm not sure why staff thinks that a zero setback on the side is a good idea, and it also begs the question that everybody asks all the time, where do you put your trash can?
We had that discussion with the applicant about the trash cans, getting them in between in five-feet distance, and we also discussed the fact that these are small lots and trying to have a smaller, and speaking with, I guess, the, the trash private company about reducing, having smaller carts, if that was, if that was possible, doing that.
So can I, Linda, if you may, so I lived in the small lot homes that are in Anatolia, and even the smallest can, which I still have now in my other house, you could not fit that through the gate that I had. And I believe that was, it was 18 inches from the house to the end of the fence, so I want to say that's about a three, so I don't...
18 inches. Some people unfortunately are wider than 18 inches even.
Yeah, I know, I, I know, but I'm saying, it's 18 inches from the fence to the house, and then the gate, to, to have the swinging mechanism meant that you had about a 16-inch or so opening, and you could not get the small can through that either. So they, they would build hedges and things like that in that neighborhood, because the HOA would get all over them about it, and they, they basically dealt with it with landscaping. But they had, they're all in front of the house. So that, yeah, I, I had never seen this stat like this, but then again, I'm, I'd need to go back and look, but maybe it's, it's three to four feet between homes, but that's exactly the problem they have. And five still is pretty tight, so without, without the specific dimensions of what the smallest can would be. But then again, Republic always defaults to the largest green spa, green and recycling can for everyone, and they, you're only charged on the size of your garbage can, which you can, which you can get smaller. Usually the other ones, they just drop off the larger ones, so we'd have to coordinate that with everybody.
They have, there are three sizes, 30, 30, 60, and 90 gallon.
Yeah, but they give you a 90 of recycling and, and green every time, because they, they don't charge you anymore for that.
And these lots are still going to have green space in the backyard and need to get rid of whatever.
Yeah. When they're going to have trees, it'll drop stuff too. So yeah, that's, I hadn't, I hadn't seen this written down before. So that, that would be something that we probably need to figure out. If it's, if the, if it's a zero setback on one side and it's five on the other, and that's where the open gate is, you might be able to get it, because if you have, if on one side you have five feet of an opening, but if you're splitting that, and that, and again, that's the example of the house I lived in where the gates were on the same side, therefore your gate opening literally was about 16 inches, and, and it wouldn't fit any of them. So, I mean, and that's just my experience with, with that. So I don't know if somebody wants to, is that, is that the case here? Is that you're talking about it's five feet on one side and the gate opening would be over there? I see the applicant nodding his head, so is that essentially what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
We also talked about...
So you probably would have enough room to have a gate that big, under this scenario.
Well, we, we did talk about trash enclosure locations and, you know, possibility of inside the garage, and, and I...
That's not legal.
Mm-mm.
Health code will not allow you to put a trash can inside of.
And, and the other item that we talked about was including it within the architecture of the house, which a citizen had passed along a picture, one that was done on the outside, but looked like it was just a closed-in closet, so that was passed along to the applicant.
The one other scenario here that I, that I know we brought up at some point was a man door to the side of the house from the inside of the garage. So if there's a way to do that to accommodate it, to where we know we're going to have a 36-inch door, a 30-inch door, 30 inches the standard, I think, that usually will fit, and if you could drag it through the garage, that's fine, but requiring, but, but just saying it's going to go in the garage is illegal, as far as I understand.
No, it's not. Fire code, if nothing else.
Yeah, I, I think it's a health code that you, that can't be the only place that you can store garbage. Linda, did you have more questions?
Uh, no. No, I don't.
So I see the applicant, would you like to address at least that question? Because if, as I started to talk this through, I'm, I'm here, and I was realizing that I don't think it's the same scenario as the development I'm talking about, so if you've got five feet of an open on one side, you probably can't accommodate it.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bob Holmes with Regis Homes. We are talking about a five-foot side yard, which is actually pretty normal in a subdivision situation. The issue here is, okay, you've got a zero lotline on one side and a full five feet on the other side, which is a normal gate that you can size properly to put your trash cans behind the gate.
Okay.
So is there a paved pathway so that people can actually walk, like if it's, if it's on the front of your driveway, can you then, I mean, it's going to go through your front yard, but, but you, we've, the initial problem we had in Cat Village was the fact that on our alley-loaded products, they had done gravel, and nobody could haul 90 pounds of, 90 gallons of anything across their gravel lawn.
Yeah, I think the nice thing here is that you guys will have that opportunity to address that kind of issue, which is a very specific one dealing with what is the house going to look like, what is the, you know, what are the elevations going to look like, what's the front yard going to look like, and you're going to have another set of approvals before you for those kinds of issues. So you can bring those up as, as something that need to be addressed.
Well, that's fine, but if there's not a sentence that says accessible pathway as a part of the trash facilitation, then it may not get into, it may not get into whatever it is that you all give a future buyer for this piece of property.
I don't have any problem.
I mean, you have a special development...
If you want a condition that says, hey, you've got to be able to get your trash can below, behind the, the five-foot fence, that's a reasonable condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for staff? David.
I was not at the last meeting where this was discussed, and I understand, I should have watched the video, I did not. I understand you guys talked a lot about connectivity in terms of walkability of the site. As I'm, as I'm looking at this, and I looked at the exhibits before, it looks like there are just, staff, there are just two walkable exits from this neighborhood, and they're the same as the drivable exits. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Actually, we're adding one, and it's in the conditions along Sunrise Boulevard. So just south of Volkering's connect to the Sunrise Boulevard sidewalk.
That's not represented on this graphic.
It's, yes, it's on the, it's on the conditions.
But the graphic we have up here doesn't show that connectivity?
Right.
That would be condition of approval 24. A pedestrian connection off of B Drive shall be reviewed by the applicant planning department and public works to connect to the Sunrise Boulevard sidewalk.
Yeah, I actually, I actually thought that was right down where the, where the car connection is. I didn't realize that would be anywhere else, the way it's written. Actually, the exhibits were very difficult to look at electronically. They just simply didn't blow up, didn't have adequate resolution to figure out even where B Drive was. So the challenge from a walkability point of view here is sort of that fundamental layout of you come in on the street, and then there's sort of this block of vertical homes in the middle. So if you were, if you live anywhere to the south, which is to the right, you're going to have to walk around those somehow to get to the target shopping that everybody, or a lot of people, like to live close to something they could, they could walk to like that. But this whole site design from the shopping center forward, we've made it incredibly difficult to walk to that shopping center. For example, you can live right behind the Rayleigh's, but look how far you have to walk to get there. It's not human nature to do that. So what people are going to do is get in their car and drive. Because if you can't do something reasonable, your brain says, this is unreasonable, this path I'm on, I'm going to drive. You see it in every parking lot where you park, in a large parking lot, people will make a straight line between their car and the door of the business. And if they can't, that causes some, you know, like dissidence. And so that fundamental design of having that street so low as opposed to cutting across somewhere farther north does that, I'd say, the south part of this development. We've already got the problem of the other half being stuck behind the center with no, with no shortcut.
I know that if I remember correctly, one of the things that we talked about, though, is the fact that, for instance, this little piece of street called E Court, directly to the north.
Here?
That looks like it ought to be a connection point to the back of the shopping center, but you're in the loading docks for Rayleigh's, and there's an elevation difference in there. And a giant masonry wall.
But there's no path, for example, that would take you through and around to the end?
There's not.
That is, we did discuss maybe a connection there. There is a metal gate there, and that's for the emergency vehicle access. So it currently has a gate there, not the sound wall for that access point. And we did talk about...
Isn't that like 10 feet above it, though, too? Isn't that the one with significant grade?
There is a grade to it, and so we thought about maybe looking at that as another connection point. However, you're walking out into the dock areas and the service area of the Rayleigh Shopping Center.
Well, any path they do is going to have to be accessible, and that means some very large switchback in order to clear that 10 feet.
We probably ought to take that thing out of the general plan about making walkable neighborhoods because we're not. We're faking it. This is not a walkable design.
It's also a very oddball piece of property.
It is a very odd piece of property.
It requires very high density, and that's not easily accomplishable in something that small.
And the original problem, frankly, was with the layout of the shopping center.
It is.
They would not give, in order to make the site more functional, so here we are with the hard follow-on remainder parcel. So my other curiosity, other than the trash discussion, which my colleagues already brought up, was the gates. These are private streets. If you add gates in that situation, presumably you add a lot of value to the homes. People feel a lot more safe there. We want higher-value homes in Rancho Cordova. Totally private streets, I'm not sure. And we've been very split, as I counsel before, on gates, but this would seem to be one of those opportunities where you could gate the car, but not the pedestrian, and add value for very little negative impact to the community.
All right, let's talk about that, actually. I had forgotten that when I met with them, they wanted to do private streets. The problem is, and Albert can provide information, the problem is that it's my understanding that when you do private streets, then you are responsible for all of the utilities in the street, the sewer, water, storm drain, and that the utility company will not come and maintain those. Therefore, it falls on the homeowners, and they are going to have an HOA. So that means they've got to connect enough money, collect enough money from them that they are able to maintain things when they have problems. And the problems that those three utilities have are not cheap. So do we want, I mean, do we want this to be the most expensive homeowners association round?
I'd be more concerned about the value of the house. I think that that would be our fundamental consideration as opposed to how high the homeowners dues are. So homeowners dues, that's sort of an issue for the builder, you know? How high does he want to set up the standards in this neighborhood? And we'd obviously have a concern if they were set too low. I don't know if we'd have a problem if they were set too high.
I would.
Well, and...
And also, I would say that I think the statement that a lot of us have made is that the statement that's made by having gates is not necessarily the one that a lot of us embrace.
No.
What does it say about the people outside of the gates? That you need them? So fundamentally, it's just not something that I'd be, I'd be in support of if given the choice.
Maybe Public Works could address why, when Beazer wanted to do private streets for the alley-loaded product, staff wanted to go with public streets instead.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. It's been a little while since we had the Capital Village discussion specifically with the alleys, but I believe there were a number of reasons that those ended up being public. One of those was maintaining access by trash vehicles. The other was the long-term observation, maintenance, and repair of those alleys. And the city was better prepared to maintain those than the HOA was.
Does the trash company have to get a, write, an access agreement in order to actually, I mean, we've been talking about the trash cans, we haven't talked about what if you have to take your trash to a communal setting because the trash company didn't get access to the private street? Do they need an access agreement or something?
I don't know the exact mechanism, but I'm sure that they would have some agreement on how that would work.
Well, I mean, having owned a condo with a private HOA, it wasn't gated, but we were also responsible for the driveways or roads, and they were always in horribly disrepair. But it was commercial pickup with dumpsters. And I mean, if you gated it off, you would then usually have to hire your own collection, collector. So they would, they would be private collection. But yeah, I just, I wouldn't trust the HOA that I live in now or the one I used to to maintain roads or other things like that. I just, I see, I see no upside to that in a community. Not to mention that it adds an enormous burden of unaffordability and...
So I'm not sure we've got an exhibit that tells us, but are these streets wide enough to be public streets? The alleys? Because the alleys in the Cat Village are 20 feet, aren't they?
These streets, these streets do not meet our current, our current standards.
They do not?
For the width.
Is the plan, though, because I hadn't heard anybody say that these were going to be private streets. Is that, is that the actual plan right now? The HOA is going to be responsible for maintenance? Okay.
Yeah, that's what's in the document.
Stupid.
Mayor, before you turn it back to staff, I would like to ask staff if we could actually clarify and slightly revise the new condition that was added, condition number 24 that they mentioned, that Mr. Sanders raised. Right now, it says a pedestrian connection off of B Drive shall be reviewed by the applicant planning department and public works to be connected to the Sunrise Boulevard sidewalk. I think very slight revision so that instead of it saying shall be reviewed, I think we need to say shall be added by the applicant and subject to review and approval by the planning department and public works department.
Good idea.
That, I would ask that you include that in your motion on the item.
Sorry, Bob, you had a question?
Yeah, if you would go to page, we have six right now. Go to five, we have the proposed Sundance subdivision location. Let's go to five. There you go. I have a question about that bridge which crosses Folsom South Canal. One of the things we've talked about on all of our homes and everything is making connections. And the bike trail on Folsom South Canal is something we've talked about, and we've been doing it on the Mather side of the Folsom South Canal, that's where the bike trail is, if I remember correctly. If you go on down this way, is that bridge that's there, right up here?
Yeah.
Is that something that could be used and added, you know, used for the, people can make connection for, on their bike trails, on their bicycles, to get up there and get across? I mean, you know, that would be another access from the homes, from the bike trail to the homes, to the shopping center like that. But right now, you have to cross there at Douglas. I'm not sure about that bridge right there. Is that something that's usable, or is that just something that's there?
The current use of that bridge is an overshoot for water from the north side of the canal down to the south. So it is, it does not have currently capacity for pedestrian or bicycle passage. It would require significant modification to allow that capacity.
You know, that's actually Morrison Creek. Canal has a lot of those water overflows as you drive south on Sunrise. But this one, judging from the time at which this particular area was taken, has water in it, and that's Morrison Creek going through there.
They are crossable, having done it, carrying a bike. I'll remind you that Ken...
But you weren't supposed to be doing that.
No, you're not supposed to. But I'll remind you that Ken Cooley paddled across this particular one during a high-water event.
Again, not something that should be advised.
Not officially, just rumor has it.
Kayak, kayak.
Kayak, I'm sorry, kayak, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that use. I just saw that, and I thought, well, one of the connections we've tried, been trying to make is so people can get places, you know?
There's like four of those between Douglas and Jackson, is what I'm thinking. There's even one, there's a couple down past it, too. There's one over by the rendering plant and a couple other ones. But yeah, they're, they're high-water transfers across the top of the thing. They're not, they're not meant for people.
I was going to talk to Ken Cooley about it, but I don't know, you know? Other than that.
Well, and there's a significant grade difference even from the canal back to these lots that wouldn't kind of measure up in the right way. It would be great if we could just tear down the stinking fences around that canal and use it, you know? It's just funny when you think that, you know, you look at San Antonio, and they created a fake canal system just to use it, and we levy off everything and hide behind, and I get, you know...
Safety.
Safety and floods are a very real thing, but boy, do we lose a ton of economic output by not leveraging our rivers in better, and we just learned that in Austin.
And our giant cement ditches.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, that riverwalk you're talking about, that's very nice, yeah.
And it's not, it's completely man-made. So they pump that water in there, never gist it over there. Okay, any other questions for staff? Do we have any comment cards on this?
No, we do not.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, with that, let me close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. Well, I'm willing to make a motion, but in addition to, in addition to the request to modify this revised condition 28, I'm inclined to ask Public Works to work with them to design public streets.
What would that mean?
A lot wider, a lot smaller.
You're never going to meet the densities, though.
We don't, number one, you know, so they're going to sell this to somebody else, okay? So, and I realize they want to get X number of lots, but we have no idea, at least we the council, I don't think, have an exhibit here that tells us how wide they're planning. So I mean, like if what they've planned is 18 feet and they only need two feet on either side, or, I'm sorry, they only need to gain two feet, they could probably squeeze that out of the backyards, because some of these yards are pretty generous in the back. But if they need another 10 feet, then that does make, that does make it different.
Yeah, I don't think, at this point, if that's the motion, that this could be voted on tonight, because that's a complete redesign of this project.
Mayor, I agree, I think staff would consider that to be a motion to continue for potentially some time.
So the first question is, do we have a second on that motion?
Well, I, let's just find out if anybody else is concerned about the private streets.
I'm concerned about it, but I, I mean, they've designed it, they can have it that way, in my opinion. It is what it is. And what I've seen of the project, I do, I do think it's an interesting design. It's different from what we have for sale in the city right now, and so I'd be interested in just moving it forward.
Okay.
But I share the same concern that I'm not a fan of private streets.
Okay, so maybe we just want to ensure that staff works with property owners in the future and doesn't do any more private streets.
Yeah, my bigger concern, and again, this will just go back to my ownership of a condo in a private community, that they didn't start off charging enough in the HOA, and then they tried to make it up 20 years later when everything needed to be fixed. So I don't know if there's any way to ensure that when it comes for design review, that they bring us a financing package for deferred maintenance, for a 30-year financing package, something like that. Because what inevitably happens with these communities is they start off with 50 bucks a month, and they do that for 15 years, and then they finally do a study, and they realize they've got $3 million of work to do, and they've got $200,000 in the bank. So that's, that's where all of these things end up suing each other and not having enough money to do the deferred maintenance.
Well, I agree. You can look at, you can look at what's happened at the townhouses in Beazer and the, you know, we've all seen the mountain repairing...
Every townhouse in California is this problem.
Yeah, repairing fronts and repainting and roofs and leaks and lord knows what all over there.
But nobody will vote for an increase until, until their roof needs to be fixed, and then they want to be first, and then they want the fee to go back down. So that's my only concern with it, because when you add roads to that, that's, that's a bigger cost than the roofs and the siding and everything else, because you can do that as it becomes a problem. They're the ones you have to do it all at once usually.
Okay, well, I will move, I will move that we find the environmental document adequate and appropriate, and that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 11-2017 with the change to condition 28, I think that was.
24?
One piece of paper says 28.
Can we clarify that?
Piece of paper tonight says 28.
It's 24.
This was already made? This revision to 28 was already made?
Oh, I'm sorry, Adam, you read a different condition.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Then to adoption... Then, to adoption of revised condition 28 and the change to condition 24, and, June, what's resolution 125-2017? Why are we adopting one and just introducing the first reading of the other one?
The resolutions for the tentative subdivision map, the SEQA, and the special development permit, and then the ordinances for the Development Agreement Amendment.
Okay. Okay, and adopt resolution 125-2017.
I have a question on that. One of the things that was brought up, and I think we can go ahead and pass this tonight, but I want to have it looked into, to have the, so it's five feet on one side of the house, and 18 inches on the other side.
Zero.
Whatever way it is, you can have it set up so the five feet can be where the gate is, and you can get the garbage cans in and out, and like that, rather than having it five foot on the side where the grass is, and the 18 inches on the side where the concrete is, and, you know, they can't really do that through the lawn during the winter time, especially when it's so wet.
I think, I think to the applicant's point is that that's really gonna be something to pay attention to at design review.
Yeah.
So when they bring those back, and we see facades requiring the concrete, and as somebody who drug my trashcan in my zero-lot line home through the bark and dirt, and bumped my gas meter every time, which always scared the crap out of me, I would tend to agree with you.
Yes.
But I will say, this is a better idea, because these other homes, the gates were all next to each other, and then they had open sides on the other side with no gates. Had they done this, that you would have ended up with the adequate amount of size. So this is actually, to keep this product and to add that size to the gate, the way they designed, the way Lennar designed, they just don't get me started, so.
Okay, all right, so that's the motion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. I'd like to thank staff and the applicant, I know that this has been a long series of conversations about this, but I do appreciate everybody's flexibility in getting to the end game. And I do want to acknowledge our couple of Air District staffers that are here that have been working until the last minute to bring this home, and to make sure that it fit the Air District's codes as well. So with that, we will move on to, is that it? Wait, I'm marking the wrong thing here.
Regular calendar items.
Yep. Making my vote count on the wrong item. Okay, regular calendar items, fiscal year 2016-17 preliminary year, and financial report and budget amendment from our, you're not our CFO anymore, you are our director of a million things, administrative something or other, right?
CFO is easier.
Is it still that? Okay, can I, we can still call you that?
That's okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Kim Durancaradorgio, City's Administrative Services Director, and I'm here this evening with a report that's twofold in purpose, the first being to provide a preliminary pre-audit year-end financial report for fiscal year 2016-17. And the results of this that you'll see tonight are consistent with what we discussed during the most recent budget process, so I don't think there are any surprises, but it's a chance to just have a high overview of this. And then the second purpose of tonight's presentation is, staff is requesting that the 2016-17 budget be amended for certain appropriations that we'll go over during this presentation. So I'm gonna first start with an overview of the 2016-17 general fund of year-end, preliminary year-end financials. In the top section of this slide, which is actually attachment one to the staff report, this is just shut in presentation format, kind of goes through the major revenue categories in the general fund. And looking at the first line, the revenues of taxes, we'll see that the taxes are consistent, the 2016-17 actuals are fairly consistent and on course with what they were in 2015-16. And I'm actually gonna flip forward for a minute to a bit more of a detailed presentation of taxes, because taxes, that 75% of our general fund budget consists of taxes, so this is the most important revenue source. And so, looking through the major revenue categories here, we see property taxes, which is the single largest revenue to the city. We've seen over the years shown here, the trend is consistent growth in property taxes, and we saw that continued growth in 2016-17. When it comes to sales tax, if you compare and contrast 2016-17, year-end number of 13.9 million with the 2015-16 actual, 15.9 million. On the surface, it appears that we had a significant drop-off of sales tax, and I want to provide a little bit more context to what that is. It's a couple, three different reasons for that. In 2015-16, we received misallocated sales tax revenues, that basically revenues that belong to other cities were given to us, and we knew before the end of the year that we had to give those back. So, they were reflected in our numbers, but we did return those. Secondly, we had the end of the triple flip, so there was a cleanup, one-time cleanup payment that we received in 2015-16 as well, that enhanced those numbers.
Kim, can I, just probably more so for our newest member, the word "triple flip" has been used quite a bit, and I know it's not an easy thing to explain, but as simple as possible, what is the triple flip?
The triple flip, okay.
Which I know is almost an impossible thing to do, is to explain that.
Her mind just exploded.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to give it a shot, but somebody finally explained it to me, I think I'm starting to understand it five years later, but-
So just very quickly, it was basically back in 2004, I want to say, the governor, in order to issue bonds, needed a so-called new revenue source, the state needed a new revenue source, and so their new revenue source was basically taking a portion of city sales tax, and using that revenue source to leverage and issue bonds against. And so, cities, the broadly burned sales tax rate is 1%, typically, that's of the 7% that the state gets, the city gets 1%. And so, of that 1%, the city during the time of the triple flip was getting 3/4 of that, and then that other 0.25% was actually going to the state, and then they were doing some true-ups, and it was very cumbersome and complicated.
They're trying to make it up to us.
What?
Exactly.
You might, you might meet with Kim, and she can give you a-
Triple flip, I don't understand the flip.
There's some other components to it as well, so includes the LF.
They took some of our money to use it for bonding, and then they tried to give it back to us in other revenues from the state that wasn't tied to bonding, so that they could get a bunch of, a bunch of money all at once.
It's also in the past now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which is the most important part. It's not happening anymore, but-
And then we got a bunch of money from another city, but we decided to give it back anyways?
We didn't decide we had to give it back.
No, just, no.
Yeah. It wasn't ours to begin with.
So those are two of the reasons, and then the third one, during the course of 2015-16 fiscal year, we had one of our top 10 sales tax generators leave the city, and so that sales tax drop-off occurred during that fiscal year. So overall, that's why we see a drop-off in sales tax, but overall, we're still seeing consistent growth in that category, when you account and isolate for those factors. Another category that I just want to highlight is transient occupancy tax. If you look over the years shown here, you'll see some pretty significant growth in TOT. The hotel market, hotel motel market in Rancho Cordova is doing fabulous, and we're continuing to see steady growth there. And even these numbers, this is net of the revenue sharing that we give back to the county for those hotels in the annexation area, so we're still continuing to see very steady growth in TOT. UUT, utility users, excuse me, utility users' tax has been consistent over the years, there's not a lot of changes there, and that's similar for the remaining taxes going down the screen. The other one I just want to mention quickly is the property transfer tax. We have seen some pretty significant growth there, just with the number of home sales transactions that have been occurring recently in this market. So jumping back to the prior slide, working through the other revenue sources, we've seen some growth in our franchise fees, and those are predominantly driven by rate increases from the part of our franchisees in the city. If you go down to licenses, permits, and fees, those were steady, they held steady at about 3.5 million from the prior year, and that's where you see mostly our building permits. And interestingly enough, our building permits were basically equal 2015-16 into 2016-17, they were at the same level. Overall, the other revenues going down the page are all very consistent with what we saw in 2015-16, and what was projected during the budget process. Jumping down to expenditures, the first-line personnel costs, you'll see 7.3 million, and that is well below the budget of 9.1 million, and that is a result of staff vacancies. So we had salary savings there. What you'll see in the next line of operating costs, of 28.5 million, that actually was slightly higher than anticipated and higher than the prior year, and that's a lot of contract costs, so the, for the vacant positions, there was some contract backfill, so that's reflected in there. And the next line is our favorite category, the revenue neutrality payment that is made to the county, and we did see a significant jump-up in 2016-17 to 8.4 million, so that was about a $400,000 increase.
Can we rename that the ransom payment? No, okay.
And then jumping down, I want to, the next two categories, capital and transfers out, again, those are consistent with what was expected, but I do want to jump down to that last item that says extraordinary gain or loss. It's not something that we typically see in our general fund operating budget. However, as previously mentioned, this year, we did have to write off 4.7 million of advances or loans that the city made to the former redevelopment agency. Just a quick background for those who may not know, when the redevelopment agency was first formed, it was not generating sufficient revenue to pay for its costs, which was common. And so, during those days, city general funds loaned money to the RDAs for them to operate, and that is what the city did. However, through this dissolution process that we've had going on for the past few years, the Department of Finance has ruled that certain items are not eligible for reimbursement, and our, portion of our loan payments or our advances are not deemed collectible. So we had to write those off during the course of this past fiscal year. So even with that type of extraordinary event that was not anticipated when the budget was put together, we did end the year with a surplus still, so we had an $871,000 surplus at year-end. Any questions before I move on from this slide?
Just to clarify your last comment, that was part of the state's revenue grab, cash grab, in closing on redevelopment statewide. And so, that amount of money, which we're now not able to reimburse ourselves, is in essence, our payment to the state because of their lack of proper fiscal management. Just to put a point on it.
That's true.
That's a tax that we're paying because the state couldn't manage their affairs, they're taking it from us.
Yeah, fine.
That's one example of them doing that. There's a whole lot more, not just City's got, anyway.
Oh, one other thing, the revenue neutrality name should be revenue neutrality tax, because that's the only money you can use as taxes, you can't use, you know, personal revenue. So it should be a revenue neutrality tax, because our taxes are taken away on that.
That's correct. All right, moving on-
All kinds of zingers tonight.
So moving on to the second portion of tonight's presentation, which is the proposed 2016-17 budget amendment. So as I mentioned on that past slide, the city's general fund will have a surplus of just around $870,000. And staff is proposing, with that $871,000, it is proposing that we use $500,000 of that surplus to reduce an outstanding inter-fund loan between the city's general fund and the local housing trust fund, which is another city fund. But just to remind the council of what's that, what that loan is, that consists of two loan payments that the general fund made to the local housing fund. About 1.3 million was for phase one of Mather Veterans Village, and the remaining 2.1 million that was advanced was originally for the Horizons project, and now the crossings project. So currently, the housing fund owes the general fund 3.4 million. The revenues coming into the housing fund have averaged just about $32,000 a year over the last five years. And so, if we're looking at that over the long term, it would take an extremely long time for the housing fund to be able to generate sufficient revenue to repay that loan. So the staff is proposing that consider, that council consider repaying that or reducing that amount by a half a million dollars. So that is the first budget amendment request. The next one, and this is all in Exhibit A to the resolution in the staff report, many of the projects, CIP projects, had appropriations in 2015-16, and those projects tend to span multiple fiscal years, and so there's a request for carryover appropriations from the prior fiscal year, so those projects were able to continue. A few projects had enhanced scope for additional work, either because additional monies were received, or something along those lines, and those are in funds, those are not general fund projects, those are in capital project funds or special revenue funds, where there's dedicated funding sources for those projects. And the last item is, we need to budget for asset depreciation in our enterprise funds, which is the Stormwater Fund, that is the only fund that the city actually budgets for depreciation in, and that did not occur during this last two-year cycle. So that concludes the budget amendment request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment, the first recommendation here on this page, it's very consistent with what we've been trying to do in the last couple of years. We have been carrying some inter-fund loans on the books for quite some time, that we don't really see as realistic or reasonable to expect that they will be paid back anytime soon. And even with the current rate of revenues coming in in some of these, it may take 40, 50 years for these loans to be paid back. So, we felt it's really not good fiscal practice to continue keeping those on the books, and they have been on the books for quite some time, and this is part of our effort to clean up these items from our, from our accounts. We did some of this last year with the Kilgore Cemetery Fund, the enterprise fund that we had, and this is another part of it, and I think the part that we managed to write off the significant amount of the 4.7 million dollars that you saw earlier tonight, really helps us long ways to clean, have really clean books for the long run.
Cyrus, would you estimate how many other funds we would like to deal with internally in some fiscal year?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So this, actually, this fund, if I'm not mistaken, right, last year, we cleaned up, we had several funds last year, the Kilgore Cemetery, we had a CIP fund, and the General Plan Fund, that all had sort of internal deficits or loans owed, we paid all those off last year, and so the housing fund was really the last one remaining, and it's a larger amount. So this, as we start to chip away at it, this would be the last one.
And there's no prepayment penalty, or?
It's along to ourselves, isn't it?
Internal.
Okay.
It's an internal.
Internal.
And what was the identified income source for this? I don't know why I had it, I had it in my mind that this was paid off in five years the last time we talked about, but maybe that, was that the county regularity that was about this amount, that we-
No, I think, I think it was probably some aggressive assumptions on the revenues coming in from the housing trust funds, and were not at all realistic.
Okay, I thought there was an identified source to this.
This is the one that comes, this is the one that comes from commercial and office and warehouse development.
That's correct.
And so, it's, it's based on everyone's assumption of how much of that construction would we see over a period of time.
Okay. Any other questions?
What's the real benefit to paying this fund off and not using it for another sector in our city? Besides the fact that we just don't see it getting paid off sooner?
It's really just because what we're trying to avoid is having, forgetting about an inter-fund loan, because right now, the general fund shows a receivable from the housing fund, and staff is deeming that is probably unrealistic to hold it as a receivable. And so, in order to sort of have the books be clean as possible, we're recommending that we start to write down that loan and pay it off.
A good example is, when we were looking at another agency's- A good example is when we were looking at another agency's accounts receivable, we noticed that they had something in a tune of about $8 million in, in accounts receivable that were not at all realistic. Not, no expectation of those revenues being realized anytime soon. So I think it creates a false sense of money that you don't really have. And it's, it's much, much cleaner to write it off and, and to have clean books.
And we've been able to do that in just a couple of years. Quite, quite remarkably, actually.
Very remarkable. Because if you recall even the discussions we had a few years ago related to some of our future activities, related to, you know, some major expenditures we wanted to have and, and the kind of, the numbers we presented to you always, well, forget about this, forget about this, because this is all spoken for, this is, you know, this is intended to pay off the, some of the, the internal loans that we had. Now this way, we can show you what's real money in the bank, what can you, and plan for the use of it or, or planning of it.
I think, I think the important thing to remember with this, because I had relatively the same question, is paying this off does not prohibit us or prevent us. It probably makes it easier to do it in the future for something else. So as, as we have revenues that come in and we decide we want to put out a certain amount of capital for a project and plan for it to be paid back at some other point, it's easier to do that if you don't have another, if you don't have a lot of these laying around that, you know, technically we'll get that back someday. And if we're really not going to get it, we might as well pay it off.
Through the mirror, I would add that we saw many California cities in the recession really struggling in that time of fiscal stress to understand what their real fiscal situation was because of how much inter-fund loan borrowing they had. So where there's, where there's a history of having extensive outstanding loans over a, a series of accounts, when there's severe fiscal stress or even incredible opportunities, it can be much harder for the organization to figure out its actual economic situation, fiscal situation.
Didn't our bond rating go up and it'll be, the chance of it doing higher still? It went from, to an A and then double A and I'm looking at this, if we're down to the, no more except for this one payment we're making, so to speak, if the other ones are done, I think it'll make it, make us look even better still.
I think overall, we have a very positive financial picture for the city. Not only with the amount of very little inter-fund borrowing that we have, to be, our liabilities, including unfunded liabilities for pensions and retirement is so minimal that we can actually write a check for them tomorrow if we wanted to.
That's what gives us our bond rating, not, not the inter-fund transfer. But we're double A, we're double A minus in case anyone wants to.
That was crystal clear in the paper yesterday.
Yeah. What was in the paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was in the B.
It was in the B. Called public I.
Oh, I didn't read it. Yeah, but that's, that's the difference. If you talk to school districts or anybody else, there's a reason that their bond ratings aren't where they are.
Yeah.
David?
Could you talk to us about the stormwater depreciation amount?
The amount or why we're?
Why we're going through the process.
So the city inherited or took on the stormwater utility system and that infrastructure underground has a value. And so that's the book value and essentially has a depreciate, it has a useful life and we're depreciating it, we're recognizing that depreciation over, I believe it's 30 years? If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's 30 years, 30 or 50 years. And so it really, what it's, what depreciation is saying is that this is the amount of, you know, your, your system is deteriorating at this rate every year. So right now, government accounting only says you do that for your business activities, your enterprise funds. But similarly, that's something that should be done probably on the government side as well.
So it's a pretty substantial change based on what we had in the budget?
Correct.
What, what caused that level of change in depreciation schedule?
I'm not sure. Do you have any history on that?
I'm not sure because I know we were just, had just taken it on recently when this two-year budget was adopted.
That's, that is correct.
That's, okay.
So prior to the city taking the operations over, we didn't own the assets, just minimal assets that were in some of our roads. And so when we took the operation of the system over, we got all of the assets with it, including the depreciation expense that came along with it. We weren't sure where that was, what those values were at the time of budget preparation. But now that we are in our second year, we know what those amounts are.
So the changes is reflective of the timing of taking over the district?
Correct.
Fully?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Any other questions?
Can I, can I just add one more comment related to the stormwater? Then we also created a new stormwater utility for the new development and for the new system that's being built. We have built in it a, an appreciation factor in terms of the cost adjustments that we need to do. And so it's a, it's a much more healthy system and accounting system that we have created for, for the new ones. This is the one that we're talking about is the one that we inherited from the county and it, it's fixed. It does not have a cost adjustment, inflation adjustment. And that's the reason that we have to basically, it's a, it's a more difficult one to manage. But I think we can do it a lot more effectively.
In other words, our revenue is fixed per parcel. It's that dollar 67 or something that you pay on your property tax bill. But it's that in perpetuity with no.
With no inflation.
Increasing cost and no fund available to fix things that need to be fixed. It's quite an asset we took over, huh?
We had no other choices. We own, we own it whether we want it or not.
More questions for staff? Did we have any public comment cards on this item?
No, we did not.
Okay. Then I will move that we receive the fiscal year 2016-17 preliminary year-end financial report and adopt resolution number 130-217, amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget.
I have a motion by Budge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood? Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye. Motion carries. I kind of threw it out here before, I don't know if it needs another workshop, but at some point, we do need to talk about what we're going to do with our promised program money that we committed to next year.
When, yeah, when is that state-funded program effective?
I think it's the fall.
This fall?
This coming fall.
Oh, wait, 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 let's see. I've got.
Fall of 18. That makes more sense.
But we've already committed those funds. So we, we paid for this year, we've committed to next year.
Yep.
And we probably need to figure out what that commitment looks like.
And that's a really good point, you two, because when David sent that out the other day, then it seemed like it wasn't needed. However, in addition to this particular article just explaining what it was about, there was a companion piece. I mean, it wasn't intended to be related, but there was a companion piece about tuition costs and people going to school and that kind of thing. So it really seems that the amount of money that, that we have committed could be valuable.
Yeah.
Even though their flat-out tuition is paid by the state.
And it's only 12 units that's paid. So there, there's a couple of different ways that we can really approach, approach that. Well, I mean, here, here's the laughable thing, right? We knew this already. Costs 1.3 million to cover every student that wasn't on a bog waiver already in this county. So that entire bill costs $34 million, which is, I, you couldn't even describe it as a rounding error for the state budget. So the fact that this hasn't happened before is kind of laughable. But I think there's a way to incentivize students to get to 15 units, which if they take 15 units for two years, they'll be on track to graduate in two years. And then I think also looking at the second year of college.
Yeah.
In some way. But again, I just throw that out there because, and again, it's a great problem to have that we had a great idea, it was very popular and then the state adopted it. So let's look at the next way to raise the bar. But I would just throw that out there as something that we should have an agenda sooner rather than later so that we can give some, give some clarity to our community because we're only about five months away from those applications opening again, because it was like February or March. I'm looking at Maria and she's nodding her head, so I think I'm right. So I think it's something that, that at some point, we need to have a discussion about because, obviously, we're very proud of our program.
I could copy this, but it's probable that Maria could just get us the bill or a summary of the bill. Because this, the details that, that they put in this article disagree just a little bit with some of what you said. So we really need to know what it says or what he signed.
So that's, any other agenda items? No? Okay. With that, we will stand adjourned in the memory of the 41 souls that have already passed and the thousands of homes that have been lost in Northern California due to the fires. And our prayers and thoughts are with all of them.